And if I don't like it, I'll just quit and go someplace else?
Exactly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And she's from TV. I'll be back. This meeting is not all that exciting.
I'm not saying, but I will be back. It can just run, I mean, we just clip it anyway. So I'll be back in like probably half an hour or three minutes.
Yeah, because the last time we talked for a long time after the meeting, you were doing better than I said.
Yeah, it's not live. I mean, as soon as you adjourn the meeting, we cut that. The only thing we put in there is beginning to end. So from when you did the pledge through the end, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
And the small piece right now.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you all had an opportunity to do the minutes from the November 21st meeting?
Yes. The only thing on town bills and budget, we spent eighty percent of our repair and maintenance bill, maintenance budget. Not all of it.
Of our maintenance?
Repair and maintenance, yeah, that one line.
So eighty percent of repair and maintenance?
Yeah, that five-two-oh-three line. Actually, we've spent eighty-two point five-six and I just paid a bunch of bills this morning, so we're just cutting away on that. So. As total, we've only spent forty-seven, forty-eight percent of that. But I just paid a whole bunch of bills, so. Well, from Veterans Day and Thanksgiving and all of that, that all got taken care of today.
So you're telling me you don't want most on repairs to the bus side?
No, just quit, we have spent eighty percent of our repair and maintenance budget, most on repairs to the buses.
I motion that.
One second. Okay. Do all those in here?
Aye.
So, I mean, we're okay. I am a little bit concerned about that repair and maintenance line, only because we just had, I mean, we've had to, we didn't pay for the windows in the bus and we aren't paying for the accident, I mean, that person's insurance, but we've had to buy tires, we've had to buy brakes, I mean, a couple other things that come out of that line is our storage container, which went up ten dollars a month. So I don't even have to tell you, everything's more expensive than it used to be. So, yeah. The other thing is we used to pay three hundred dollars every time the shredding truck came. The bill for that in October was eight hundred ninety-five dollars.
Wow, that's to the new company.
Yeah, so I'm gonna have to either see if I can negotiate something with them or maybe that's something that a friend, I mean, the supporters could help us subsidize some. I really hate to not do that because people really depend on it and like I've said, you know, you might think it's paper, but the fire chief says it's kindling. So, you know, to give people the opportunity a couple times a year to get all that stuff out of their houses is, I think it's an important service that we provide, so. But I might ask the supporters if they'll help with that. Hopefully can negotiate. Except the people I know that used to work there, I don't even want to negotiate with, so.
We need a big senior discount.
Yeah. So, anyway.
And then?
Just as an FYI. So apparently that day that we did in October, some doctor's office in town brought six huge containers of sharps, which is way, I mean, I had no idea. And they took them, because whatever. And that was three hundred and six dollars to have those taken away that we had to pay, so. So we need to be, I mean, it's, you know, the regular household ones that we collect every other time, that can be absorbed through the fire department or whatever, but those were huge.
They don't have a place that they would normally take?
Well, they probably did, but it probably cost them three hundred and six dollars too to have them taken away, so, yeah.
But it's not bad to point out to them that they will step forward.
If I knew whose opposite it had been, then there would have been a phone call and I would have sent them the bill. But I have no idea knowing who it was.
So if you're gonna change your mortgage?
Yes, I will do that, but we've never had that happen before, so I, I mean, I think it's, you know, you bring your needles from your husband because he's diabetic for whatever. It's not, it's not meant to be a, you know, disposal for businesses. So.
Yeah, put that in.
We will tighten that up a little bit for the next time.
Oh my goodness.
So that whole day cost us about twelve hundred bucks. But other than that, after the party, after the New Year's party, we really don't have any other expenses for, I mean, big expenses until St. Patrick's Day or the Smock closing event or we go back to lockdowns or anything, so. So I'll spend some more money in the next couple weeks and then we'll take a break. I, so I didn't have, I left the copies of everything in everybody's mailbox that I had submitted with the exception of the program improvement request forms, which I would. So I requested when I went through my budget meeting to increase the hours for administrative assistant outreach, Asian outreach, homemaker, and our handiwork. Because Kristin and Stephanie are already working forty hours a week and not getting paid for it. But in comp time, it's lovely if you have time to take it. Tammy's program hasn't had an increase since they started it, which I think was in two thousand thirteen, we started, so in ten years, Tammy really has, and she's got six hours, so I wanted to bring hers up to ten hours to match our other outreach people. And she's done a great job keeping track of people and it was hard for her because of the negative publicity that COVID got regarding Asian people and all of that. So she's really done a great job getting people back out and now we're, you know, who knows what's next, but. And she's had a lot of people in her gatherings that she's done and people have been very responsive and dumplings, and then they were the dumplings. Anyway, so I did that. I asked for another day for Mike, so he could work in two days a week. Michael is, he went to me a couple weeks ago, he had eighteen slips in his book for one day. Now, that's not manageable for anybody. Hand in hand.
That's the hours of work.
Well, yeah, so I asked for another day for Mike. In addition to that, he also does all the lock boxes and goes to the batteries for the battery exchange, so there's that. And then Sharon, the homemaker, so she's got sixteen hours now. I brought her up to eighteen. Part of that is because right now, we've been told and other people that I've talked to have been told that there's probably a one-year wait for homemaking services right now from our state home care agency, which is totally unacceptable in the greater scheme of things. I get about the labor shortage piece, but I can't, like, you know, some of these people. So what we're gonna do with Sharon is after the first of the year, she and probably Stephanie and I are gonna sit down and we're gonna cluster, like, she's got clients down at the bottom of the hill, she's got some clients over at Mayberry, and she's got some at B Street. So instead of her, like, two hours, whatever, when she only needs to do this one's laundry or help this one with vacuuming or whatever, we're gonna cluster those places so she might have four hours one week at Rogers Road. So she'll do everybody down there, whatever she needs to do. So we'll try to spread it out that much. She thought that was a great idea. And so we will, we'll work on doing some of that. And then I did terminate service for one person because she does have, she does have service from Spelwell, which I wasn't aware of. So, and you can't have both, because I don't have enough time for her to have both. And we do have a little bit of a waiting list right now, but I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks we'll be able to scale that way, so. Yeah, it's challenging every day to figure this out. But anyway, I submitted all that. The money to pay for that comes out of our four-note grant. And even after using the money for staffing, we still have almost twenty-three thousand dollars left for other programs and new things. So it's not like we're spending it all on that and not neglecting. We've never had this much money, but we have so many more seniors in Westboro. It's based on the twenty-twenty census numbers, so we end up with a lot of money. And it's, the contracts inspect till twenty thirty-two, so we'll never get less than that amount of money until twenty thirty-two. And I'm pretty sure I won't be here by then. I threaten to leave, but I'm pretty sure by twenty thirty-two, I'll be someplace else, so. I'll be seventy-five years old at that point, but, yeah, so we'll, you know, I'm trying, we're trying, I should say, to make all of this work. But I guess I have to wait for it to find out if they'll let me do that.
Now, as far as the county, so if you go to state and say you have this additional expense that we're asking you to fund or asking to have come to the state, how long does it take to find out?
What, to the state?
Or is it to the state?
Oh, this program thing they have? No, that's for the town. I don't know. I guess when the budget, when the final budget's presented to the legislature, I'd have it. Generally, you know, I mean, I increased our budget, as you can see from what I have given you. I increased it some, I increased some in, what you call it? I increased repair and maintenance by a thousand dollars. I increased special events and programs by some. I increased office supplies by a thousand dollars. And then other supplies and books and period, because I look close to saying, I mean, you know, I can't, I can't, you know, we try to be very good. Like, I just, I get upset when the town moles me things, because I have a rail box for Pitttop. I was like, how did you put a stamp on it? I, like, I have ten checks coming back to me. That's six dollars worth of posters. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot in the greater scheme of things, but I really do try to figure out how to do this. So I think that, and, you know, we shuffle legs off a little out here, we do, I mean, we do the best we can, but there's some things I can't, you know, I have to have the sanitary supplies for the kitchen and I have to have, you know, the container has to be paid for and people. And I explained when I went to the meeting that we've increased our prices on, like, grab and go and, you know, some of the parties and whatever, but I don't wanna price them so much that the people can't afford to come. Because that defeats the whole purpose of doing it, so.
I wonder if the compliance is something, a hundred dollar extra penalty?
No, and I think a dollar, but I think if I ask them to pay more than that, I mean, and not everybody, some people wouldn't bother them at all, but some people, it's tough, you know? I mean, especially people living in housing, I mean, they're on very fixed incomes. But I think once the tax bills come in January, it's gonna be a lot of it. More people concern about where the money's gonna come from. So I, like I said, I would like to be able to maintain some level so that people are able to still be able to come to things and it's not a hardship. And certainly, if it is a hardship, just come talk to me or talk to Kristin or Stephanie. I mean, we're not evil and we want you to be able to come and enjoy yourself and do what you need to do, so.
And that really offsets the need to see yourself. And would you want me just to refer to the minutes that you just did, instead of writing everything?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because all this was in the minutes.
No, no, that's fine, but I just want people to understand that, you know, we're trying to. I have a carb problem. Are you all right?
Oh, no, no, it's just a carb thing, you're gonna get it solved.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Happy Christmas, everybody.
Same to you, same to you.
All right, so I guess we can still have the meeting, we just can't vote on anything. Anyway, so we're working through the budget process. When I get news, I'll let you know and if things change, I'll let you know. Try my hardest. Don't even head against the wall sometimes.
You do very well.
Yeah, I think we all do.
Absolutely.
Anyway, the mini buses. So we got the bus back from area glass. It looks lovely, except that this morning it died. Dana has it, he's doing something with batteries and corroded terminals or something, I don't know. Please pray for us that we'll have it back tomorrow, because we really need it tomorrow, because we have a lot of people coming to this party tomorrow. The other bus is still up in Worcester. I was told that we are not going to be able to buy a new bus, even though we have the money. It's not town money, because it's a capital expenditure.
Oh, that's a capital expenditure.
Not even gonna get there, I don't think. Because of the difficulty we've had hiring drivers. And that the town doesn't consider it a service, it's just one of our programs.
That makes no sense.
Oh, war to come. Anyway, so that's what's happening with that and I, I don't even know what to do.
Did we have that on order?
No, I couldn't order it until I. So, anyway, so that's what's happening with the buses. But in the meantime, the school was awesome. I'll be writing Amber in the school committee a letter thanking them for, and making it so easy for us to use the bus. Somebody called one day, right after we had started using it, "Is the bus coming for me?" So Kristin called and said, "Are you?", he goes, "Yeah, I'm sitting outside her house." She said, "Well, he's sitting outside." "No, there's a bus from the school sitting outside my house." So we kinda had to educate people a little bit, but it was harmless. It was harmless, so, anyway. But we really appreciate the fact that they let us use it and it certainly did help, so.
How many times can we use it?
I'm not gonna ask. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just keep my fingers crossed that Dana fixes the situation today. We may, we may. But Brad said he and Diane went up to Worcester Saturday and our bus was not outside at Worcester Truck Body.
So that could be a good thing.
That could be a good thing. So, we'll see. So, anyway. I mean, honestly, the glass for the bus didn't cost nearly as much as I thought it was gonna cost. I was delighted about that too, so.
Well, it only took us, what, four years to buy the big bus that we have?
Yeah, well.
So four years from now, maybe they'll let us buy another bus.
So, yet again, another thing I won't be here for, but. Anyway, so that's what's happening with, what's happening, so.
Well, you know, but I'll have maybe some council members join you in some of these meetings?
Oh, yeah, that's gonna happen.
So I think that may be something to think about.
Yeah, I anticipate we probably will go before the finance committee this year, which we don't always do that. And I have no idea if they're still doing liaisons and all that stuff, but I would anticipate we'll be going before then this year and you certainly are more than welcome to come with me. Encouraged.
Keep us posted.
I will.
Be nice if we know the dates.
As soon as I know, you'll know, so.
Thank you.
Usually it's end of January, early February, so. Yep, anyway. So what are y'all doing on Friday afternoon?
Friday afternoon?
Yeah.
This Friday afternoon?
Want to come wrap some presents?
What was that?
You want to come wrap some presents?
I'm telling the rapper, actually.
Actually, Bob said he's a really good rapper, so I'm gonna call him later, but.
I just must check my calendar.
I understand. Stephanie has done an outstanding job coordinating all of this. I can't even imagine what our house looks like. She's kept, she, her dining room must be covered with stuff. She's kept a lot of stuff at home because there's no room to put anything else here. She's gotten, one of the local dance studios is donating sixty gifts.
Awesome.
The supporters gave us money for gift cards, she's gotten other donations from places. I mean, she's just done a great job. She ordered the flowers from, I mean, she's, she's just, and wait till you see what it's gonna look like tomorrow. Anyway, but anyway, if you're around on Friday and you'd like to come.
What time are you talking?
After lunch, twelve-thirty, one o'clock, a couple hours. I mean, I figure if we've got, you know, three or four people, we can get them done in quick times.
I should be able to come for a little bit. My, my son is coming from Washington State, he's on a work trip, so he's gonna be coming sometime that day, but I'm not sure. Isn't that wonderful?
Yes.
We're very excited.
I can see why you would be. Anyway, so that'll be, and then Monday we'll start delivering, Monday we'll start delivering stuff. And everybody's kind of excited about that, so.
Where do we just go to?
All over the place.
Huh?
All over the place. And I need to call the sugar shack and find out when the candy's gonna be ready. January third, I think I mentioned this before, is gonna be a cleaning day here, in case you hadn't noticed when you walked in the door. In this room and my office, 'cause everything that doesn't have a place to go when they have it in their hand, it lands in my office, it's awful. There will be no activities that day, the bus will be on the road. I'm not anticipating a whole lot of stuff going on that day, because it's the day after the holiday and whatever. And I figured rather than just open and close or whatever, just get it all done. I've already told Wayne I expect him to be up here with the truck to make a couple trips to the dump, because we just gotta clean some of this stuff out of these closets and out of here, so.
And what time are you going to start this?
Nine o'clock. Good. Yeah, we don't work all day.
Can you say the day again? I managed to not write that down.
January third.
Okay, thank you.
Tuesday. It's, like I said, it's just, it's got, if it bothers me, you know, it's gonna be, like, too much. A question was brought up about whether or not we were going to, we needed to continue the grab and go lunch and the dinner at the back door. I think we do, but I just thought I'd get some feedback from all of you.
You've had a good response, though.
We had a great, we've had a great response. We did, we had seventy-two, picked up the meatloaf last month.
Wow.
I think it was seventy-two.
Oh, that's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot. And Chris and Daisy and Sue, I mean, they do a great job putting all this together, but. I think especially through the winter, I just think it's a nice, I mean, at least it might get somebody out once a week to come pick up their sandwiches or come pick up their dinner. And at least it helps a little bit maybe with the food budget and all of that, so.
And you get a lot for the money. I love the macadamia cookies.
Those come from.
Those are good.
We can thank Kristin's husband going to Costco on his way home for those. You'd like my daughter a lot, those are her favorite. Yeah, I don't know, I just, I just think it's important, I mean, for a whole variety of reasons, that we keep doing this. I, I don't know, I may have to justify it. I mean, we, so the dinners usually are between nine ninety-five and ten ninety-five, we charge seven for them. And the sandwiches are about six ninety-five to seven ninety-five, depending upon what kind of sandwich it is. And then, and that includes the chips and the pickles, so we basically just buy the water and the cookies. I mean, I, I don't know, anyway.
No, I think it's a good idea to keep.
Yes, I would like to see it continued, please, for the.
Anyway, so that's, that's that.
I haven't had a macadamia cookie, though.
I haven't baked them yet. I got one, I got one, I'll say this out loud and then I'll get three phone calls, I guarantee it. I made one batch of peanut butter fudge yesterday, but I just didn't, I wasn't motivated to do much more. I was cleaning and throwing stuff away and, yeah, so. But baking's, I do my best baking at night, so it'll happen, but I'll make, I'll make sure. Kelly has to share them with you, so. Okay, so Jim has scheduled a Moderna booster shot clinic for the twenty-seventh, December twenty-seventh here. If you haven't gotten your booster, I'm not sure if he's gonna have the Pfizer one too. They had some issues with refrigeration up at the town hall, somebody left the refrigerator open, but I don't think he lost COVID shots, I think he lost something else, but he's trying to recoup. I mean, we had about thirty-five people that came the last time. I also have asked him if he would consider doing another flu shot clinic here, maybe early in January. I got a report today from Elder Affairs, only thirty-eight percent of Massachusetts seniors have gotten flu shots this year.
Wow.
I have to confess, I'm one of those seniors who hasn't gotten mine yet, but, like I said, that's not, those aren't good numbers, so.
I've a shot.
Yeah, well, I, you know, how many shots can I get in? Jim says, "Oh, you can get them both the same", I'm like, no!
No, 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 you should space them out, spread them out.
Yes, exactly, so. So there may be a flu clinic, I'd like to think we'd be able to schedule another one for early January and get the word out more and get, you know, people in here, because it's scary, so.
Does Jim need help?
I'm sure he does, but I, like I said, I don't even know what time that's gonna be yet, whether he's gonna do it in the morning or the afternoon, so once I find out all the details, I'll let you guys know. Fuel assistance has started with a vengeance. People are scared, although I have to say, the price of home heating oil, as of yet, has not hit the threshold of what they said it was gonna do, which is wonderful, because it's, I mean, not to say that five hundred dollars isn't a lot for oil, but it's better than what they were talking about, you know, eight dollars a gallon for a hundred gallons would be eight hundred dollars, so. However, they are moving very slowly down at Smock, they're short-staffed, as everyone is. So I just tell people, don't, you know, call your oil company, tell them you've applied. Call Eversource or call National Grid, tell them you've applied for fuel assistance. They understand and, you know, nobody's gonna get cold. So we did do an emergency delivery for an older couple on Friday. I, I, the benefit to being here so long is I have relationships with a lot of these companies. So when I say just deliver the oil and save me the bill, they do that, so. Which I appreciate, so. Because I can't abide cold seniors and cold children, or hungry seniors and hungry children either, but, um, so. But I anticipate, you know, this morning was a little chilly and there was that white stuff on the ground, so I expect we'll be, I'll be hearing from people, so.
And you know, to go back to grab and go lunch, you include, come, meet a friend, come in and eat.
Yep.
Here, it's warm.
And we do have people that have stayed and had lunch with a friend, so. Yeah.
So that's, you know.
It's not.
A good thing.
I mean, obviously, we had to do it differently during COVID, but now, like I said, we do have some people that hang out and eat their lunch with people and it works out lovely, so. Anyway, in January, there's a couple things we're anticipating. Bob wants to do the soup for the senior soul, um, which everybody enjoyed. And I think that's definitely a good thing to do. Our new senator has already set up office hours, Senator Moore. If you didn't meet him, he's a very nice man, um, and, um, he and I are gonna have a little talk pretty soon, too. Tammy's already got the wheels churning for Chinese New Year, which is coming up. We have a lady who has offered to do a beading class. And she, um, it's a necklace that goes over your head, so we don't have to do clasps and all that stuff.
I'm glad you clarified that, I'm thinking beading.
Oh, beading.
Beading.
Oh, beading with a D, not G.
No, 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 no. I also am hoping, keeping my fingers crossed, that we can get the R and V near me program back up and running because we've had a lot of people ask. Of course, now they extended the, um.
The real ID.
The real ID till twenty twenty-five. It's like, by the time twenty twenty-five rolls around, I've already got a remote line again after, like. So, anyway, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to get that up and running again, um, because we've had a lot of people ask about. I think now, too, because people are starting to travel some or whatever and they, they need an ID, so. So some of these things are, are coming, so. So there you have it. Something else you want me to talk about? We're good. If you have not signed up for tomorrow and you wanna come, be sure you stop at the desk because, um, we ordered a couple extras, but I think we have a hundred people coming tomorrow.
How many?
I think we have a hundred, or we ordered a hundred meals, I think we had like ninety-six or something. And Stephanie's done little gifts for everybody and she.
Oh, God bless her.
Oh, she's, listen, that girl.
She is amazing.
I know, and I said to her, I really appreciate you doing this because now I don't have to think about all this stuff anymore. No, she, she did, and she's done a lot of the decorating throughout and if you've got time afterwards, we can. All the, everything's here, get set up.
She's super helpful with the jewelry stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Super.
Yeah. And then, um, like I said, then New Year's Eve, um, we were gifted some really pretty sparkly, um, candles. Not real candles, like, you know, with the little lights in them. The battery-operated candles that we'll use for, um, New Year's Eve, they're really pretty. And, um, yes, also the Worcester Men of Song next Wednesday night at six thirty.
Oh, do we have to sign up for that?
Yeah, well, I, you know, just so we have an idea how many people are coming, but I think we'll have a bunch of people coming. The, um, they'll be here at six thirty. And, um, they're really excited because they asked several places and we were the first ones to say yes, so that's a good thing.
Oh, good, that's good, great.
Yeah, and then, um, that morning, if you're interested, Andrea is gonna be doing a flower design class. It's thirty dollars, it's limited to twelve people, so if you're interested in doing that. Some of you have seen some of the flowers that you've done, haven't you?
I've done them now.
Yeah, I mean, they're amazing.
They are.
So, yeah.
So she's from a local florist?
No, she's a, Andrea Little is a, she's a international flower judge and designer. Oh, no, she, we're very fortunate to have her. She's pretty wonderful and she comes in with buckets of beautiful, wonderful smelling things and greens and flowers and when you walk out of here, you walk out of here with this beautiful whatever, so. Whatever you're, she makes a, she makes a prototype and then you do your own thing, so.
Well, was it last year when I did mine? I forget, but when company came, they thought I bought it at the store.
I know, that's the thing, it's like, you just tell your, oh, no, I made that, like, yeah. Just very casual. But anyway, so that's, that's coming up, too. And then on the twenty-eighth, that afternoon, um, our offices, we all picked our names and we're gonna do our little party here after. Everybody, after everybody leaves the birthday lunch, after everybody leaves the birthday lunch, we'll do our little in-house party for later in the afternoon, so.
Do you need help or anything for that?
I'm just gonna order some sandwiches and then we'll, we have some really good bakers and stuff in this bunch, so. So we'll be, yeah, and nobody made a face when they picked their name, so, so. You know, sometimes like, oh, okay, none of that, so. Anyway, so that's what's happening. Is that all?
So you need help, uh, doing the tables?
Yeah, this afternoon.
Yeah, I can help you while.
Around for a little bit. We've gotta wait. Wayne's got, I think he's got nine tables set up out there that we can get started with because Bingo's. Up there, so. There's something in this room. I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's the cloth or the fabric or the, I don't know.
The dust?
The dust, could be, so. So that's that. It will not be open on the twenty-sixth, that's our observed day. So if I don't see you, have a wonderful Merry Christmas or Happy Hanukkah or whatever it is you observe. Take a deep breath and start again in January.
戴森 seat belts?
Yep, our January meeting will be on January ninth.
We're at the meeting.
Yeah. And I think, like we've done in the past, if we know by Sunday morning that we're gonna have, you know, three feet of snow on Monday, well, everybody, Nancy gets to call everybody.
Give me something to do.
Yeah, while she's sitting there watching it snow, yeah. Although it was really pretty last night when it started, I have to say.
It was pretty, it really was.
I'm going to bed now, see.
Actually, it was pretty nice this morning waking up to it.
It was very pretty.
Because it was sparkly still before anybody got walking around on it, so.
Except for I was very surprised at how much we actually got. My car, I had to go out early to get all the snow off.
Yeah, I was too, we probably got.
Yeah, I thought just a dusting, but we probably got a couple of inches.
Yeah, I would say somewhere between two and three inches. Yeah, I was surprised because I thought it was like, you know, they were talking, well, they weren't talking novelty flakes. They were talking measurable snow, there's a difference. I don't know what that novelty flakes where that whole thing came from.
You buy those. You buy those.
Aren't they the ones that hang from the ceiling for decorations?
Well, tis the season.
Yes.
You know, I like to see snow at Christmas time.
The joke when, um, years ago, the new cast of W B C, Don.
Oh, Don Kent?
Don Kent. Only hip-dee, fluffies, that's all. Just gonna have some fluffies, folks. Get up the next morning and hip-dee.
I was fine, I'm, I'm good.
Are we in all the business now? I've got two things.
Okay.
First, could we somehow make a rule or request that if someone can't attend a council meeting, they give us reasonable notice? We're supposed to, you know, like a day before or at least that morning of the meeting? So we can plan ahead and do that?
Yes. We'll remind everybody. I did get, um, an email from Phil this morning. He tested positive this morning, so. Well, he had it, he tested positive the day after last meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right after, yeah, because I was wondering about.
Right after, he was sitting right in the dark between, yeah. Okay, yeah, we can remind everybody.
Second thing is, I don't know if the rest of the council knows, but as I am correspondent secretary in the district, I did send in scheme cards to senior, to senior staff and I asked because I said Christmas cards.
I got one sent.
On behalf of the council, on, it sounded council. There's just enough.
It was very much appreciated.
I did that last year, too, but I can assure you, some people don't know that's really fun, so.
Very much appreciated, so. That's the only thing we've got. If you'd like to come fill out the rest of my, if you'd like to come fill out the rest of my cards, I would.
I'm trying to finish my one.
Yeah, well, I, I, I started mine last year and then I got sick. And I had, I'd look at them in the box in the corner and go, yep, I should. So I had a whole lot, they're all, there's nine of them that the addresses have changed. And, um, I said, you know, apologize in advance for the whiteout. And, um, yeah, so they're all addressed and I got, I put my address labels on last night, so I'm taking part in this issue as well. Unwrapped toy for tomorrow, or a gift card if you don't wanna go get a toy. I already have an envelope with some gift cards and other people who brought up, so.
To a toy store or?
Um, Target, Walmart, um, Old Navy.
So it can be any kind of toy?
Yeah. Did kids, little kids? They've already had a huge response at the, I forget, I, I don't wanna quote.
Holiday store?
I know Julia posted something at the weekend on Facebook that said how many kids that are already. So this nice infusion of stuff tomorrow would be like.
Times were living and, yeah, and it's sad.
And it maybe doesn't have, I mean, not necessarily have to do, it's just, stuff has just gotten so expensive, especially those kind of things that are imported and, um, and taking so long to get here and, I don't know, I, I'm. I wish I could solve that problem.
Should the presents for tomorrow be wrapped?
No. Because they put them out and parents can kind of go shopping. If you know your daughter wants a martini, then, yeah, never, so.
Okay.
Yes, you do.
We have to adjourn first.
Well, we can. Linda can just adjourn the meeting because we don't.
Oh, that's right, you can adjourn, okay.
Can't we make a motion to adjourn or not?
No.
Oh, we can't even do that?
No.
I will call the meeting over, we voted adjourned.
Okay, thank you so much for coming out.